Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to Stratford City Council. We'll begin this afternoon's meeting with a moment of silent reflection. Thank you. Joining me here in the council chambers is Clerk Touchana Defoe, Deputy Clerk Chris Bantock, Chief Administrative Officer Joan Thompson, and we have various directors online as well as all the members of council here. At this time, I'll turn it over to the clerk.
Through you, your worship, are there any declarations of pecuniary interests? And if so, please state the general nature thereof.
Counselor Beatty?
Item 7.7, as it deals directly with my resignation.
Thank you. Anything further? I think you'd like to maybe shorten that to resignation from the Invest Stratford Board.
Sorry, your worship, a little bit more clarification, yes, my resignation from the Invest Stratford Board.
Thank you. All right. Any others? Not. Next item.
Item three is adoption of the minutes, and the minutes from the December 14th regular council meeting will be listed at the January 11th, 2021 council agenda for adoption. Moving on to item four, adoption of the addendum, there is no addendum to today's meeting. So moving on to item five, report of the Committee of the Hole-in Camera. Item 5.1, from the April 14th session under the Municipal Act as amended, a matter concerning the following item was considered, and that was regulating short-term rental accommodations. And there are a number of motions listed for your consideration, the first being that the March 9th, 2020 council resolution regarding short-term rental accommodations be reconsidered.
Your mover. Counselor Henderson, seconded by Counselor Gaffney, discussion. Not all those in favor? Opposed, Fenny? And that's one opposed, that's carried. Thank you.
Through you, your worship. So then the next motion listed on your agenda is that the March 9th, 2020 council resolution regarding short-term rental accommodations be rescinded, and that staff be directed to proceed to prepare the short-term rental accommodations provisions of the comprehensive zoning bylaw to limit short-term rental accommodations to principal residences for a maximum of 180 days, and that safety inspections be incorporated as part of the city's licensing process of short-term rentals.
Moved by Counselor Vazalaco, seconded by Counselor Burbak, discussion. Counselor Bunting.
Thank you, your worship. I'm going to speak against the motion in as much as I think it's, I'm all for licensing of short-term rentals, 100%. I think we're being a little on the harder side. I would like to see something a little softer, which would encourage short, people who have existing short-term rentals sign on board and become legal short-term rental accommodators. Certainly, we've got a bit of time to get that done, but I would, I'll vote against the motion. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, all those in favor? Opposed, if any? Opposed, that's carried. Thank you.
Item 5.2, at the December 12th session under the Municipal Act as amended, a matter concerning the following item was considered. That is advice that is subject to solicitor-client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose, and a position, plan, procedure, criteria, or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried on or be carried on by or on behalf of the municipality. And at the in-camera session, direction was given. Item 5.3, at the December 14th reconvene session under the Municipal Act as amended, a matter concerning the following item was considered. Advice that is subject to solicitor-client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose, and a position, plan, procedure, criteria, or instruction to be applied to any negotiations. And at that session, there was no direction given. Item 5.4, from the December 14th session under the Municipal Act as amended, matters concerning the following items were considered. The first being an appointment to Festival Hydro, Inc., and the second being an appointment to Festival Hydro Services, Inc. The first motion listed on your agenda is as follows, that Mark Henderson be appointed for a four-year term on the Board of Directors of Festival Hydro, Inc. to November 30th, 2024, or until a successor is appointed.
Moved by Counselor Ingram, seconded by Counselor Bunting, discussion. Not all those in favor? Opposed, Fenny? That's carried.
The second motion listed on your agenda is that Tony Sisaretto be appointed for a four-year term on the Board of Directors of Festival Hydro Services, Inc. to November 30th, 2024, or until a successor is appointed.
Moved by Counselor Beatty, seconded by Counselor Gaffney, discussion. Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, Fenny? That's carried.
Item 5.5, at the December 17th session under the Municipal Act as amended, a matter concerning the following item was considered. Advice that is subject to solicitor-client privilege and a position, plan, procedure, criteria, or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried on or to be carried on by the municipality. And at the in-camera session, direction was given. And item 5.6, an in-camera session was held just prior to this evening's meetings, and there were four items listed for consideration as follows, two relating to proposed or pending acquisitions or disposals of land, an added item related to a position, plan, procedure, and a fourth item relating to security of municipal property and labor relations and employee negotiations. And at the in-camera session, direction was given on the first three items.
Thank you.
Moving on to item six, hearings of deputations and presentations, there are none scheduled. Item seven, orders of the day. Item 7.1 is a resolution regarding the proposed renewable natural gas project next steps. And there is a staff recommendation listed on your agenda as follows, that the staff, in conjunction with the city solicitor, be directed to complete the Municipal Services Corporation agreement with the Ontario Clean Water Agency for the construction and operation of the renewable natural gas facility, that the engineering firm, GHD Limited, be retained at a cost of $395,490.68 to complete the detailed design for the renewable natural gas project, and that the mayor and clerk be authorized to sign the necessary contract documentation with GHG, GHD Limited.
Thank you. Moved by Counselor Vazalaco, seconded by Counselor Burbak, discussion. Counselor Seven, then Clifford.
Thank you. I just wanted to sort of touch on briefly just concerns that I had about the project when we originally decided on it, and that's just, I guess newly is that we know that we don't have an agreement in place with Fortis BC to sell the natural gas at this point. And also the concern I have about the estimated 1,000 tons of non-recyclable waste that will go into our landfill as part of this proposal. And for really, really, it comes down to financial risk. You know, I'm just not comfortable with the many variables that we don't have control over, such as the provincial government, you know, British Columbia and Ontario. And then the prices of natural gas and et cetera. And then, of course, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that the location is, you know, to say the least, not ideal. And those are just the list of concerns I wanted to reiterate, and so I will be voting against the motion. Thank you.
You, Counselor Clifford?
Thank you, your worship. I'd like to ask our Director of Infrastructure, as the councillor, for me, talk, but we don't have a contract. So what would happen, and I read the report that they possibly could have a contract eventually, but what would happen if we don't get a contract, or if the price isn't what we believe it was going to be? And we talked about it before.
Yeah, through your worship, that should, we should know that answer early in the new year. We do have a, I do have a meeting with Fortis BC scheduled already early in the new year. With this stage right now, we're just, we're just going ahead with the detailed design of the project. As noted, we still have to finish off the Municipal Services Corporation, and that will be the, where we'll start looking at doing, you know, the real, that's when we'll have the agreement signed, and that's when we would go ahead with actually start purchasing the equipment, where the real expenses would come in. So right now, what we want to do is get, get the ball rolling with the detailed design because of the amount of time it takes to get that done. However, you know, if we don't have a deal, it's tough to go ahead because that's, that's where the dollars are is in selling that renewable natural gas.
Counselor Vazalacos.
So I'd like to just point out that moving ahead and being ready for, the federal government has just announced a fairly significant hike in the carbon tax over above what we even imagined when they ran in the last election. And also, the government of British Columbia has increased from 5% to 15% the amount that they're going to require for renewable natural gas within their system. So I think it's really important to take an opportunity to be ready for when these contracts become available, because there's no indication that it's going to go in the other direction, certainly not from the federal government. And I think there was, there was even some communication from Ontario gas retailers that were looking at expanding their renewable natural gas mix as well. So I think that's, that's what, a lot of it is coming. And I think municipalities that are in a good position to proceed quickly with this will be the beneficiaries of those coming, like possible contracts.
Thank you. All right. All those in favor the motion? Opposed, if any? It's four opposed, the motion carries. Next item?
Moving on to item 7.2, it's a resolution regarding the electronic waste collection and recycling agreement. And there is a staff recommendation that the city of Stratford enter into an agreement with Electronic Products Recycling Association for the provision of electronic waste collection and recycling commencing January 1st, 2021, and that the Director of Infrastructure and Development Services be authorized to sign the agreement on behalf of the municipal corporation.
Thank you. Moved by Counselor Ingram, seconded by Counselor Ritzma, discussion. Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, Fenny? That's carried.
Item 7.3 is a resolution regarding tax adjustments for 2020, and there is a staff recommendation that taxes totaling approximately $2,317,281.44 as shown in the 2020 Tax Adjustment Summary dated December 21st, 2020, of which city's portion is estimated to be $1,656,516.95 be received for information, that the associated interest be canceled in proportion to the tax adjustments, and that the treasurer be directed to adjust the collector's role accordingly.
Counselor Clifford moved, Counselor Gaffney second, discussion. Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, Fenny? That is carried.
Item 7.4 is a resolution regarding the operating budget variance report as at November 30th, 2020, and there is a staff recommendation to receive the report for information.
Moved by Counselor Clifford, seconded by Counselor Vazalacos, discussion. Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, Fenny? That's carried.
Item 7.5 is a resolution regarding 2021 bed and breakfast license fees, and there is a staff recommendation that the information provided in the report be received, and that council provide direction on which option to proceed with.
Counselor Burbak?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we proceed with option three, which would be a full rebate of the fees for bed and breakfast licenses for this year.
Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Bunting, discussion on that option. Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, Fenny? That's carried. Thank you.
Item 7.6 is a resolution regarding the Stratford Rotary Complex and Burnside Agroplex LED lighting energy conservation project. And there is a staff recommendation that the report be received, that an exemption from the purchasing policy, section 42.1, be approved, and that the Director of Community Services be authorized to retain the city of Stratford's approved trade electrician for this project.
Moved by Counselor Ritzma, seconded by Counselor Ingram, discussion. Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, Fenny? That's carried.
Item 7.7 is correspondence regarding a resignation from SECO, and there is a motion that the resignation from the SECO Board of Directors by Counselor Brad Beatty be accepted.
Moved by Counselor Gaffney, seconded by Counselor Bunting, discussion. Counselor Henderson?
I just thought we should clarify that he actually resigned September the 8th. It was recognized by the board September the 10th.
And I would ask, maybe the clerk could explain the difference in time there, if that's possible?
Through you, your worship. So yes, the resignation occurred back in September. However, due to an error, the clerk's office only received the resignation in December and brought the matter forward to the first available council meeting that we were able to.
Thank you. Anything further? If not, all in favor? Opposed, Fenny? That's carried.
Turning to item 7.8, which is correspondence, it's a resignation from Stratford City Centre BIA Board, and there is a motion that the resignation of Laura Hilton from the Stratford City Centre BIA Board of Directors be accepted.
Moved by Counselor Ingram, seconded by Counselor Burbak, discussion. Counselor Ingram?
Thank you. I just wanted to thank Laura for all of her work. She is the current sitting treasurer for the BIA Board, and she also led the HR committee or subcommittee of the BIA. So I just wanted to thank her for all of her work, and to note for anybody that is watching, the BIA will be looking for somebody to fill that position on the board in the coming months. So anybody with an accounting background would be really helpful.
Thank you, Counselor Ingram. I believe I've called the question, Madam Clerk correct? If not, I will. All those in favor? Opposed, Fenny? That's carried. Thank you.
Moving on to item eight, business which previous notice has been given, and there was none scheduled. Moving to item nine, reports of the standing committees. And item 9.1 is the report of the Infrastructure, Transportation, and Safety Committee. And there are two items listed for consideration as follows. Item 9.1.1 is the Water, Sanitary, and Storm Service Ownership Policies and Subsidy Program. And item 9.1.2 is the renewal of the Town of Godrich Fire Dispatching Agreement.
Moved by Counselor Vazalacos, seconded by Counselor Burbak, discussion. Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, Fenny? That's carried.
Item 9.2 is a report of the Planning and Heritage Committee, and there is one item listed for consideration as follows, and that is 9.2.1, planning report on draft plan of subdivision 31T-19-001, and zone change application Z09-19 at 236 Britannia Street.
Counselor Ingram? You move. Seconded, Counselor Clifford. I believe we did have an inquiry from a resident today about this being deferred with regard to the wall and some of the background. I think Counselor Bunting and Counselor Ritzma, you might have information on that. Counselor Bunting?
Yeah, thank you. I got an email today from a resident in the area, a very reasonable email, I should add. And it's to do with the residents who are back on to the property in question. And a lot of the situation is that it looks like, or it sounds like that they could be going to LPAT to appeal this process, which would, and the writer of this email had suggested that, you know, if we could defer it and allow some time for the residents to talk with the developer and see if they can work something out. I think we all know that the bone of contention is the height of the buildings at the back, and also the privacy issues that overlooking the smaller, lower units that they have existing there in that area. So I would make a motion to defer if at all possible.
Until the last meeting in January?
That would give them some time to have some discussions, I would say.
Sure. Secondary, Counselor Ingram, you're okay. Oh, sorry. Secondary for that first. Counselor Ritzma, and then I believe you had your hand, and Counselor Vazalacos had hers. And then Counselor Ingram, sorry.
Yes, through you, your worship, I did receive a similar information and request from a resident, not a resident that backs right on to those areas, but further up Briar Hill. So yes, I did receive similar correspondence as Counselor Bunting.
Thank you. Counselor Vazalacos.
I was, I was just going to point out that I think some of the concerns that I heard in the phone call that we had earlier were similar to the concerns that I brought up. But I don't have any concerns with the density. I don't have any concerns with the setbacks and some of the way the porches are forward. Like, I like the concept of the subdivision. I just thought the placement of the townhouses along, back onto Briar Hill, it didn't, it would have been better if they could have been situated central to the subdivision and moving some of the singles or even the duplexes, or the, sorry, the 70s over to that would have been better. So if they can work something, if we can defer it for them to work something out with the developer, I think that would be the deal.
Counselor Ingram?
Thank you. I have a couple of things. First of all, for, I'm not sure, do we have our interim manager of Development Services on the line? Yes, I'm hearing, yes. So for our interim manager of Development Services, I believe the applicants are in a position to appeal to LPAT if we do not make a decision. Is that correct?
Through the Chair, that's correct. We are in a position where the applicant could appeal the lack of a decision to the LPAT.
Right, thank you. And do we have someone from the applicant's side on the line to speak to the application? I just have a question for someone from the applicant's side.
I believe Ms. Barresdale's on the phone, and she would represent the applicant.
So, so my question for Ms. Barresdale then is, is there an opportunity to relocate those townhouses? Or is there a reason why they are in this particular location?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to counsel. So the concept that you see in front of you in the placement of those townhouse blocks along the northern edge of the property is dictated by a number of constraints on the site. For us to transfer those blocks internally and have them run essentially east to west becomes rather tricky to accommodate similar types of densities internal to the site. Townhouse blocks, by their nature, are obviously much longer in a run than a single detached or semi-detached. The blocks that we're showing are six-unit blocks. For us to run those blocks east-west on the site, given the grading on the site, as well as how relatively narrow the site is, if you look at the draft plan of subdivision, it is a very small number of single-detached units that are central to the site, that are in that pocket, that central pocket of the site. It becomes difficult for us to relocate or place those townhouses without having a run, if you will, for us to place a six, a six-unit townhouse block. It becomes challenging because of the grading on the site, and again, as, as well as the existing dimensions and the narrowness of the site running east-west. Obviously, we have a lot of length on the site running north-south, so between Britannia to the Rotary Complex. The townhouse blocks are, and I think I touched on this as part of my presentation, are consistent with the location of the townhouse blocks that were done. As part of the servicing strategy and information that was passed along to this developer from the disposition of the property, generally speaking, townhouse block units 59 through 63 are consistent with the representation on the preliminary conceptual work that was done by the town prior to the disposition of the property.
Thank you. And as a, as a follow-up to Ms. Barresdale, so if you were to break up the six-unit townhouse blocks and have, say, three, four, or five-unit townhouse blocks, would you be able to achieve the minimum density required for the property?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, it's something that we would have to visit. We would absolutely lose units, and we're pretty close right now to what the minimum requirement is. We may be able to hit it just on, but it could be difficult again. Once you take those units out, you have setback requirements, you have to maintain between each of the units. Then you have additional space that's passed to be put in place in order to meet the other regulatory requirements of the zoning. We would most definitely lose some of the units.
Thank you.
Anything further? If not, the deferral for 30, up to 30 days to the last council meeting in January has been made. All those in favor? One, two, three, four, five. Those opposed? One, two, three, four, five. I'll vote with those deferring. It'll be a 6-5, and it will carry, and we'll defer to the last meeting in January. Next item?
Through you, your worship. Item 9.3 is the report of the Finance and Labor Relations Committee, and there are six items listed for consideration as follows. Item 9.3.1 is the 2021 insurance renewal. Item 9.3.2 is the 2021 employee benefits overview. Item 9.3.3 is the 2020 annual reports of advisory committees. Item 9.3.4 is the operating budget variance report as of October 31st, 2020. Item 9.3.5 is the financial statements and commentary for Festival Hydro, Inc. for Q3 ending September 30th. And item 9.3.6 is the financial statements and commentary for Ryzone Festival Hydro Services, Inc. for Q3 ending September 30th.
Moved by Counselor Clifford, seconded by Counselor Gaffney, discussion. Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, Fenny? That's carried.
Moving on to item 10, notice of intent, and there is none scheduled. Let's move on to item 11, reading up the bylaws. And there are three bylaws listed for consideration as follows. Item 11.1 is the amending agreement with the Town of Godrich for fire alarm dispatching services. Item 11.2 is appointments to Festival Hydro, Inc. and Festival Hydro Services, Inc. Board of Directors. And item 11.3 was deferred, so we will remove this from the list. So there are only two bylaws listed for consideration, and these bylaws could be taken collectively upon unanimous vote of council present.
Moved by Counselor Ingram, seconded by Counselor Seven, they'd be taken collectively. All those in favor? Opposed, Fenny? That's carried. It's unanimous. We'll go to first and second reading of bylaws 11, 1, 2, and 3. Counselor Henderson and Counselor Bunting, discussion. All those in favor? Opposed, Fenny? That's carried. Thank you. Third and final reading of bylaw 11, 1, 2, and 3, Counselor Vazalacos, Counselor Clifford, discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, Fenny? And that's carried. Thank you.
Moving on to item 12, consent agenda, are there any consent agenda items listed to be considered by council?
Counselor Vazalacos?
I'd like to support the resolution for the township of Matatchwan about maybe giving a little extra time for applications for provincial funding. I know we've run into this, even ourselves being given a larger municipality at times, and, and it would be a nice idea to support some of those smaller municipalities that don't have the resources that larger ones do to apply for some of that funding.
You move. Support, and seconded by Counselor Seven. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, Fenny? That's carried. Anything further? Next item is new business. Seeing none, I'll take a motion to recess to reconvene in committee, and I believe our first one is Community Services. Counselor Ingram's moving, Counselor Burbak is seconding. All those in favor? Opposed, Fenny? That's carried. We will now move to Community Service, and I'll turn it over to Counselor Beatty as the Chair.
Good afternoon. I'll call the Community Services Committee meeting to order. Item number two is disclosure of pecuniary interest and the general nature thereof. Seeing none. Item three is delegations for which we have none scheduled. Item four is a report from our Director of Community Services. And I will, I believe we have our director on the line, and I'll have him speak to item 4.1, and that is the 2022 Canadian Junior Curling Championship Request. Turn over to the Director.
So through the Chair, this report is to waive fees for the 22 Canadian Junior Curling Championships. We've been asked to host. I'm sure we were asked to host because of our great hosting that we've done in the past for the seniors and juniors in previous years. They would require both ice pads and Hall A and Hall B during the event. It's about a 13-day period where we wouldn't have ice in the Rotary Complex. And some of the events at the Rotary Complex, we can move to the two other arenas, and, and some we can't. And the halls would be A and B. It's a partnership with the Stratford Country Club in the fact that they would provide, you know, the hosting of the event. The lead on providing volunteers. And our partnership would be that we're providing the facility. We have a great facility for this event, as we can host 10 sheets of ice and our boat pads, and we set up like a curling club where we have lots of ice, and we use Hall and B as, Hall A and B as our lounge. Lots of compliments in the past years on our hosting. And my recommendation is that we could take the lost revenue from the grant program in 2022.
Thank you. So we do have, sorry, Counselor Gaffney? So we do have it, sorry, Counselor Gaffney?
I'll, uh, move the recommendation, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Second by Counselor Ritzma. Questions, Counselor Clifford and then Burbank?
Yeah, I was gonna ask, is there, if, if, if there's, um, like an audience, is there a charge? I, I, I was at other ones where they charged to go in it, like, is there a charge? And is there any, any profit as far as the country club's concerned? Or is it all awash? I'd like to know about what happened with the finances.
Um, so, uh, to answer your first question through the chair, the, uh, there is normally a small charge to come to these events. Uh, it's a junior event, so again, the charge would be limited. Your, your fan base would be limited, it would, it would mostly be, uh, parents and grandparents. And, uh, in terms of there's a profit, we certainly hope that there is a profit. There are lots of expenses in terms of hosting a banquet. The country club would make a, a profit, or I'm assuming a profit off of food and beverage.
Counselor Burbank?
Thank you, yeah, I think that it sounds like a really exciting opportunity. The only question I had is, I'm just curious as to why the funding would come through the community grants program? Cause it doesn't really seem to me like a community event. Wouldn't it also bump some of the funding from the, like, community groups that could, could use that funding? I mean, I don't know how it's been done in the past, so maybe I'm not clear on that, but I just was wondering about that piece.
Uh, so through the chair, we have done this in the past where we've pushed it to the community grant program. Um, it's an opportunity, so it's a subsidy for, uh, sport. And there are some sport subsidies included in the grant program. And that's what we've done in the past.
Counselor Vazalakos?
I was just gonna add just to Counselor Burbank's, uh, when the World Children's Theatre Festival came and there were multi-year commitment, it came out of that grant as well. We have had a number of different one-off events, um, that have been, uh, sort of hosted by a community group or, or a community organization that has been, has been put through that community grant in the past, just for context.
Thank you. Counselor Burbank?
Thank you, yeah, just further to that. I know that as part of our strategic priorities, we did identify, um, making a, um, a sports tourism plan of some sort. And, uh, it would make sense to me to have a, a specific funding program for that that may be better suited under tourism, but that's just a thought for future events, maybe for planning. And it would make more sense to kind of come out of a tourism stream as opposed to a community grants, um, stream. That just makes more sense to me.
Thank you, any further comments? Seeing none, I'll call the question, all in favor? And that is carried, thank you. And that is it, I'll accept a motion to adjourn. Motion by Counselor Bunting, second by Counselor Burbank, all in favor? And that is carried, thank you.
Turn the meeting over to Counselor Henderson as Chair of Social Services.
I'd like to call the Social Services Committee to order. Any declarations up between your interests in the general nature thereof? Seeing none? Move to three point three, I mean to three, the Subcommittee Minister there for you to read. Delegations, there's none scheduled. And number five, um, I'm sure, uh, Manager of Housing is quite eager to give a few comments about this. Even if you're on the line, would you mind talking about it?
Um, thank you, Madam Chair, and, uh, through you, just wanted to, uh, put our support in. We're putting together an application for a Canada Mortgage and Housing Corporation grant through the Rapid Housing Initiative to set up an alternative housing pilot. Um, this would allow us to create an additional eight permanent supportive housing units for individuals who are experiencing homelessness as well as have complex, uh, co-occurring issues such as mental health and addictions. And it's, uh, missing, um, link in our housing continuum here in Stratford, and so we're really eager. Um, CMHC will give up to one hundred percent of the capital cost for this program. And that's what we're seeking.
Thank you. Counselor Vacalakis, are you moving this? And I'm looking for a second or Counselor Ingram? Any comments or questions? Counselor Vacalakis?
Um, I was just gonna say the Toronto Star, uh, today actually has an article about the first of this kind of development um, for, that the city of Toronto has done, and it, it, it looks really great. I mean, from, from a, an architect, just from a style perspective, but it just, it looks like a very interesting thing. And I'm really excited about doing a pilot to see how it works here.
Anybody else, any, Counselor Gaffney?
Thank you, uh, I'm just wondering, um, I, I understand this is going to go on the property beside the Erie Street Fire Hall. And what does, what, excuse my ignorance, but what is it gonna look like when all said and done? Is it gonna be a, 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 a small apartment building or is it gonna be, uh, something else? I'm, I just, I'm sorry, I don't understand completely.
That's perfectly understandable because there is all kinds of different scenarios out there of what they look like. Some are single, some are by themselves, some are, and ours, what we're looking at will be a two-story, four on the bottom that would be accessible and four on the top. Is that right, Aiden? Wanted to make sure I've got it all right.
Yeah, through you, Madam Chair, that's, yes, that's what we're looking for. It's very conceptual at this point. If, should we be successful in getting the funding, we would obviously, um, involve the community and consultations and have, uh, design. We would want something that fits into the surroundings and, and, uh, you know, may perhaps is brick clad, but, uh, possibilities are endless, but preliminary, what we're thinking will fit on that site would be an eight flex, sorry, eight units, um, with four on the bottom and four above.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor? Thank you. So I'd like to move adjournment. And before I do that, I just wanna thank everybody at Social Services for all and I know this is gonna be a difficult, be a little rough out there. And I know you're gonna work hard to keep everybody housed over this season and, and have a wonderful holiday. So a mover was, sorry? Counselor Gaffney, a second or Counselor Beatty? Or Counselor Burbank? All in favor? Thank you, right, Karen?
Thank you, Counselor Henderson, will, uh, council reconvene, I'll turn it back to the clerk on item fifteen one.
Through your worship, are there any declarations of pecuniary interest made at Standing Committee to be restated at the reconvene portion?
Seeing none?
Item fifteen point two is committee reports and item fifteen point two point one is from the Community Services Committee. And that is to approve item four point one, which was the twenty twenty-two Canadian Junior Curling Championships request to waive fees.
Moved by Counselor Beatty, second by Counselor Ritzma, discussion. Not all those in favor? Opposed, Vinnie, that's carried.
Item fifteen point two point two is from the Social Services Committee and that's for item, uh, four point one Rapid Housing Initiative and that it be approved.
Moved by Counselor Henderson, second by Counselor Ingram, discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, Vinnie, that's carried.
And through your worship, it's my understanding the final item on the agenda is adoption of the confirmatory bylaw.
Moving first and second reading of the confirmatory bylaws, Counselor Burbank and Counselor Vazalakos. All those in favor? Opposed, Vinnie, that's carried. Third and final reading, Counselor Bunting and Counselor Gaffney. For the confirmatory bylaw, all those in favor? Opposed, Vinnie, and that's carried. And as this draws to the conclusion of our last business meeting of twenty twenty, I want to, uh, first of all, thank my council colleagues for your dedication throughout the year to, uh, Ms. Thompson, Mr. Fo and the entire staff of the city of Stratford. Thank you for your continued leadership and work through difficult times during the pandemic. And to all our residents, may you have the many blessings of the holiday season as you celebrate, uh, the festivities. And as we come forward into twenty twenty-one, maybe all have much health and happiness. May the pandemic continue to, uh, not only challenge us, but also allow us to enrich ourselves and, uh, come together as a community like we have. And we saw a great example of that on Saturday to Stratford with love led by the Caniders. So, uh, let's hope that vaccines are available and we continue to physical and social distance, wear a mask and practice the best advice of public health officials. And I, uh, I wanna thank all of you for your time and wish you all a very Merry Christmas and health and happiness over the holidays. Motion to adjourn this afternoon's proceedings, Counselor Clifford and Counselor Ingram. All those in favor? That's carried, thank you.
Merry Christmas, everyone.
Merry Christmas.
Happy holidays, everybody, stay safe.